All right, sounds good. So I will start us off with our elementary school principal for our communication updates today. Cassie, come on up and tell us what we got going on.
Hello, everybody. Thanks for having me up. I feel like we are hitting March running. We are already March 11th and we had some fun celebrations and recognition already in the first couple of weeks of March. Certainly want to recognize Mrs. Shay. We had our school's social work week recognition last week. And so we took the opportunity to show her our appreciation for the work that she does. She's our social worker at the elementary school and she works with students in small groups, one-on-one. And she also pushes into the classroom, giving our social emotional learning with character strong. And really is helping us build that foundation across, across the building. So I want to say thank you to Tori Shay for all that she does. We kicked off our March food drive month. And if you can, at some point, go in and look at this picture more closely, but you will see all the smiles and excitement. We held a school-wide kickoff. We brought in Allison from the Painesville Community Center and did our kind of special kickoff there. And we did some dancing to Peanut Butter Jelly songs and other songs related to food. And just hyped up the month of March with our food drive. We collect food and cash donations throughout the month of March. And at the end of the month, we will make a personal delivery of both of those to, as a way to give back to our community. And this is a great opportunity for our students to give back and something that they look forward to very much. Also, March music in our schools. We had the Minnesota Public Radio Class Notes. They reached out to Mrs. Strand way back in the fall about this special opportunity to hear from Flip Side Percussion. And so it's a group of three that brought in various instruments and did a performance to our students, kind of in two different settings. Kindergarten through second grade and three through five. And so students practice their concert manners while learning about instruments and listening to their performance. It was a great opportunity to have them in. Kindergarten registration is this Thursday night. We are gearing up to welcome the class of 2037 as we meet them Thursday night, getting ready. Registration packets have been trickling in and we are anticipating more after Thursday night. We've got transportation lined up to be there to answer any busing questions. Nurse Rachel Brown will be there as well to help with screening and other paperwork. And of course, Amy Spanier helping with the registration piece. And our teachers will be there as well. So looking forward to seeing families Thursday night at kindergarten registration. Also want to recognize our Bulldog Spotlight, looking at students throughout the month of February who are mindful, respectful, and connected. And the picture is included there, but I would also like to read their names out loud so that they are recognized. Malachi Tressler, Loretta Gilham, Caleb Shoniger, Olivia Shoniger, Oliver Mandrell, Calvin Dahl, Tyson Thorpe, Solomon Bertram, Addie Herman, Avea Pence, James Haynes, Ella Walters, Grant Thompson, Peyton Akerson, Gage Morton, Rowan Tripples, Blair Brown, Dakota Garland, and Nora Ellison. Just want to thank all of our students for being role models throughout the month of February. Looking ahead to March, as you know, we have our end of the quarter coming up on March 21st with no school. March 22nd as our quick break day. That day is used for teachers to get report cards entered and to wrap up the quarter as we enter fourth quarter already, right around the corner. And then, of course, our spring break, March 29th and April 1st. Also, looking ahead, we're starting our conversations, looking at next year already and what that planning process looks like as we pull different items together for class lists and scheduling and connecting with David at the secondary and looking at what pieces we overlap in, because we do count on each other for that planning piece. And you can see the food glorious food, the food drive flyer that gets kids excited about our dress-up days on Wednesdays and what each week kind of focuses on for the different food areas. Questions or things from the elementary?
Not a question, but a comment being on the community service board. So we met last Friday, Cassie, and we did talk about this with Allison. I brought her up as a picture to share, but for the community service, I really greatly appreciate all that you do as far as that food drive and the donations that are brought in. So thank you and thank the folks over at the elementary school.
It was really neat last year, my first year, when it was brought to my attention. And Cassie, we do a food drive in March and I was blown away by the organization and how much people really give back to our community. And it's really neat that this has been a standing tradition. So I'm excited. All right, thank you so much. And we'll invite up David for the secondary school update.
All right, good evening. So on last Monday, we opened up our milk dispensers. The previous Friday, we had some dairy farmers there and Mr. Spanier was there and, and our Dairy Princess and one of our FFA students in a cowl costume. And so we had milk and cookies for middle school students. And it was really a successful week last week with the, with the dispensers. We didn't have, I don't remember any spills. I'm out there for two lunches, so kids are doing a really good job with it. And we have some things on there right now that lock it so we can, we can leave them out in the cafeteria. And it's really been a good, good thing for us. Martin is Food Month Drive here at the high school also. I just, I want to thank Kelly Whaler and Jackie Campbell and for doing a great job with organizing that. We have different activities each week and also for the help that they, the work that they put in for Sweet Fest and getting us through that week unscathed. And so thank you to them. Every year, we have, we have a speaker come in and it's, it's through a grant through River of Life Church. They sponsor someone to come in through School Reach Minnesota out of Byron. And so they have, this year, we have John Pritikin, who is a Guinness World Record holder for, he's a strong man and he has a record for bending aluminum pans into a, the smallest ball. He's a motivational, he's a naturally known motivational speaker who will be in on the, on March 18th. And that's free of charge for us. And so every, every year, that is just a fun thing for us. He'll do two programs, one for the middle school and one for, for the high school. March is a big month for us because we need to start preparing for graduation and all the things that, that go on with that. And especially with graduation being a little earlier this year, which we're excited for. Working on getting back Laureate scheduled by meeting with Pastor Dan from Crystal Hills tomorrow. And we're going to get dates set and kind of walk them through that process. Then we have our honors banquet, which we will have on that same Sunday night. And then the Dollars for Scholars Breakfast. I am right now just working on trying to reserve venues for those things. And, and then working on securing our person who's going to be working the sound for graduation in the pack. I spoke to that person and they're going to be helping out with that again. Just a lot of, you know, little things going on with that as we get to the end of third quarter, making sure that if we have any seniors that, that need to take care of some things in order to graduate. And that happens every year. And so we do our best to try to guide them and, and our staff, teachers have been, they're always wonderful when it comes to working with our seniors and trying to make sure that parents are, are up to date with, with any issues that are going on. That is all I have for my update. Any questions?
Well, I got you. I know it's on here someplace, but I don't have it on my calendar. When is graduation?
May 24th. So we will do the, we'll do the car parade again. I just sent in the application for the parade permit for the city. So we'll plan on doing that and we'll, we'll get those, get those times out there and, and.
Thank you. Rick, come on up and tell us what's happening with the world of activities.
Well, we're currently transitioning from winter activities to spring activities. Feel a bit outside, you know, it feels like it's May, but it's still Thanksgiving, I guess. Practices opened up today for some of our activities. So some of them were able to get outside and some practices morning and some chose to stay inside. So it's nice to have the spaces that we have and the facilities that we have to give them some options. Tonight, we have our sixth grade and ninth through 12th grade choir concert. And then next Monday, we have our sixth grade and ninth through 12th grade band concert. So plenty of things going on right now. And thankfully, like I said, we have a lot of space and the great facilities that we have to provide those opportunities. This past winter, we had the wrong seasons across the board with a lot of improvement with our programs. And we appreciate all the support and encouragement from our community throughout the season. We're proud of our Bulldogs and the participants and all the dedication that it takes throughout the winter. It's, the winter seasons are the longest seasons. And the lack of sunlight that everybody sees throughout the season, it makes it even a longer one. But thankfully, there's a lot of great coaches and people here to help our students make it a great experience. We had Roman Rollberg, Peyton Hemisch, and Mason McNabb make it to the state wrestling tournament a couple of weeks ago. So congrats to them. We had a nice little send-off for them with Nick had some band members playing through the school, which was awesome. And before, we encouraged our families to keep checking our online activities calendar. Thankfully, with the nice weather that we're having, it should, should provide for a good opportunity to get things started on time. And maybe, you know, I was even talking to one of our coaches today. Maybe we'll even look at moving some things up a little bit to take advantage of some of the nice weather. And so we might make some changes there just to help lengthen the season a little bit instead of cramming it all together. Makes it hard on, on pitchers' arms and things. So we'll take a look at that and see what happens. Always, we want to make sure anybody who hasn't been in a sport or activity or anything yet to have their eligibility forms and fees taken care of through the office. Right now, we are at a, you know, I've talked about this many times, last couple of years, we are really, really short on umpires and officials. I know with our softball association through St. Cloud, I think they're down 14 softball umpires from what they were at a year ago. So we're going to be hard pressed to try to find some JV C squad and junior high umpires. So if anybody knows somebody who might be interested, I know we have some people in our building who'd be willing to do some training. I umpire, David umpires, we've got like Chad Campbell, Tim Patrion has done a lot of umpiring. So we have some people in here that'd be willing to help out and get people trained in. And we're not expecting them to be experts by the start, of course, but we're willing to get some people in there that, because right now it looks like we might have some of our games, whether we're at home or on the road. We might have to have our coaches do it, which is not what we want. So if anybody's interested in doing that, please reach out to us. I wanted to finish up with a big thank you to Painesville Motor and Transfer. They do a great job of communicating ahead of time with me as far as any changes. And they're, they're great about reaching out several weeks in advance to make sure they have drivers lined up. And some of those really Saturday mornings, like I know wrestling would take off sometimes that they took off at 5:30 for section meat down in Canby a couple of weeks ago. And it's great to have those drivers that are willing to do that, to leave at 5:30, not get back until late afternoon. So they're committing a whole entire day to our, our athletes and our coaches and our community. So we appreciate what they do for us. Questions?
Great. Much. All right, community Ed. Chris, what's going on over in community Ed? You say bacon cookies? Yeah. Bacon cookies, really. All right. Well, our spring catalog came out mid-February. We've been taking registrations for most of our, for our spring and some of our summer programs. And I think registrations are going well for most of our programs. So they'll get another boost here coming up in the late April, because then our summer catalog comes out. So two catalogs come out pretty close together. So they'll, well, they'll, they'll get a double boost. Our summer progress program, open registration, we're getting, we're on path to get similar matching numbers as from last summer. So we're focusing on now making sure we have our positions filled for staffing. So that's what my main focus is here for the rest of March. The junior Bulldogs, the opens, the registration opens up for, on March 18th. And we are having our, an information night the same night as kindergarten, the kindergarten night. So well, the three-year-olds at six and the four-year-olds at 6:45, just give them a chance to ask questions, find out more about our program and to get them ready for that Monday registration lock. So they can get ready to register for junior Bulldogs preschool. I have a link to the catalog if you haven't already seen it. And then Fitness Center, we had J O, just, just this last weekend, a J O volleyball tournament. It was Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. Teams from all over central Minnesota. The J O program runs a really nice tournament. They have lots of good helpers and, and it was a well-attended tournament. So it was nice to be able to have it at the pack. They also use the high school gyms and the middle school gym. Spring sports have started, but you know, like Rick said, I think they're going to be outside for fairly quickly. And they're using the inside, but they would much rather be outside. So it's nice to have options. Some things that are coming out, we had a pretty big list of early childhood of kids that needed to be screened. So we opened up an additional screening event on March 20th. And we're going to be able to make our list much shorter. So when we have one in September, it won't be quite as big or quite as crazy. We knocked off quite a few off our list. The Early Childhood Playground Committee, we're meeting on March 19th. We are going over a grant application that has been written. And then also discuss what will be some future fundraising ideas. We are also looking at the playground plans from, from the past and one that was just submitted. And take a look at those to, you know, see where, what direction we want to go. Tomorrow, I'm going to the township meeting. The township is a partner in our summer rec programming. So Janelle and I are going and I will present some, just summer rec stats and numbers, answer questions, meet people. So we'll be attending that annual meeting. We're working to put together information for the next catalog, for webpages, for other promotional type of opportunities around the tech levy. So I'm working with the live stream staff and we're looking at creating some videos, some written information. Janelle and myself are, and others will be working on that as well. April 6th, we have the talent showcase. That's the right date, right? April 6th?
Pretty sure.
Okay, good. April 6th is the talent showcase. Tickets will be available and that'll be at the Performing Arts Center. That's an annual talent show showcase that the Arts Council puts on. So they have quite a, quite a lineup. And I haven't, I wasn't able to attend last year, so I'm hoping that I'll be able to be there for this year. We're also trying to put together a possible community connection night. This is a, as members of the chamber, the chamber has been doing community connections. And this is where a business sponsors it, either at their site or someplace where people, chamber members can come in, learn more about their business or, or services that that host has. So we are looking at one in late April to showcase the cool programs, the technology, the staff, student projects. We're going to start in the coffee shop and create a, an experience for local businesses who are chamber members. And they can invite their employees as well. So I'm looking at putting that together, that I said, late April. And then just my monthly meetings that I attend. Any questions for Chris?
Great, thank you. Thank you. Technology update. So Chris touched a little bit on some of the collaboration that is happening for communication around the tech levy. We've been doing a lot of research on, from surrounding school districts to see what, what type of communication and platforms they're using to really get information out. And so we've been in contact with Jacob Burfiman, who did a lot of nice publications for, for the city and especially our industrial loop, kind of trying to highlight what happens there. And so we're, we're going to really try to pair opportunities of natural technology, things that are happening across our classrooms. I sent an email today to staff and just said, you know, this has really become ingrained in your everyday teaching. And it's what our kids know. So step back a minute and take a look at what happens in your classroom from a stranger's eye and think about what really needs to be highlighted. And so we're really excited about bringing some opportunities to, to kind of the forefront of how our kids are using technology to access their learning. So I'm excited about that opportunity. And I've had a couple of staff are email and say, okay, they have ideas. So that's exciting to have staff thinking about that. So, and I appreciate Chris kind of being a facilitator to coordinate some of those details, because there's lots of moving parts. So thank you for that. Buildings and grounds. So Ken let me know he wasn't able to be here. A couple of things that he's working on. We are having a heat exchanger issue. There's glycol in the little boiler. So that's the green stuff. And that's not good for people that know boilers, that's not good. So we are, he has been in touch with Chapel Central and they're on it and they're working with him. And I'm really grateful that it's not 30 below right now and the boiler doesn't have to run on overdrive. So that's good news. We are full of that within our custodial complement, which is also good news. There's a couple of water leaks in our heating lines that they've been using buckets to just collect until we shut down the boilers and then we can make those repairs. And you know, with the beautiful weather and the spring sports, they've been getting fields ready for athletes to be out and practicing and doing what they do outside. So Ken is busy and he's proactively taking a look at the things that are needing to happen. So if you have any questions or concerns, please don't hesitate to email Ken. But those are his moments of update for today. All right. So with that, I will invite Mr. Nick Flatam on up to the table. You can have a seat right there and give us an update as to what's happening regarding your music trip. You can just sit at the table or if you want to.
I have something for you guys.
Yep.
So hi, I'm Nick Flatam. I am, of course, the band director here. Over the, over a number of, Cheryl Bonham has done a trip every other year. I know I'm taking the reins on planning all that, which is not nerve-wracking at all. No, I'm just kidding. It's actually, I've done it before a couple of times, but she's always done a really good job. And so I have some big shoes to fill. But I just wanted to, last year or two years ago, we, Cheryl and I came and we talked about the trip when we went to Branson. And I thought I'd do the same thing this year for our trip to Memphis, Nashville. It's going to be, I'm very excited about the trip. The kids are very excited about the trip. Last, when we went to Branson, Missouri, we filled one bus with no seats left. And this time around, I believe we're going to fill two buses with no, no seats left. So with, with all our, with all our chef rooms and staff and kids that want to go. So that is, that is very exciting. And I just want to show you kind of a little bit on what the, the trip's going to, going to be like. The kids are going to be, we're going to be tired throughout this whole, this whole weekend. So we leave Thursday night, November 28th, and we get into Memphis on Friday, the 29th. And we go tour right away. We don't even get to our hotel until 9:00 PM that night. And we're going to tour the Sun Records Studios, have some dinner at Alfred's on Beale, I think. And check out the pyramid, Bass Pro Shop Pyramid, which is on my bucket list. It's going to be very, very cool. The next day, we will check out Graceland and we'll go to the Graceland Museum and tour Elvis, the Elvis Experience. We'll eat some dinner and then we will go to the Randall Opry. This is a tentative thing, so some of this might change, but I think most of it's going to be about the same. So enjoy a show there plus a backstage tour in, for that. That's going to be a lot of fun. And then we will at 10:30, and then we have to go, I can read. Sorry, we go, we go to Memphis and Nashville. So there's five hours in there where we, where we have to travel to Nashville. So I think we do that in the middle of day three. Then on day four, on a Sunday, we'll, we'll be going to, we'll do a city tour of Nashville, check out a farmer's market and do an RCI Studio B tour. And that's, I think that's where we're going to do a performance inside the studio. So we'll be able to, both the band and choir will have a CD to bring home with, with what we decide to perform on that. So I'm very excited about that. They get to perform in a, in a professional studio, which I don't think any of them have done that before. So we will check out the Country Music Hall of Fame and again, eat some dinner and then head our 15 hours home. And then we'll be back Monday around 1:00. So that's going to be our very, very fun, very exhausting, memorable weekend with the band and choir. It's going to be, it's going to be a lot of fun. We have a lot of fundraising opportunities for the kids. Kids can sell butter braids and we do that twice, one this year and one next, next year, starting in September. We do that so when the kids, when the students give, sell butter braids to anybody, if they sell them now, they'll learn that the butter braids are the most delicious thing they have ever ate in their lives. And then next fall, they'll be able to sell the same things to them again. So that's the idea. And then we do what is called band stocks or I'm sorry, music stocks. And that is, that is in a nutshell saying, when students will ask anybody if they would want to support them going on the trip. And they say, you can buy a music stock from me. It costs $10. They get a music stock, the student gets $10. That goes into their account and then that is, that will go towards their, their portion to the, to the trip. We also do the Soup Sandwich and Song in the Fall. And it's just a big concert that we do and you eat, you, it's a silent auction and there's a good time. So yeah, that's about everything I, I can think of to tell you. You guys have any questions? Um, you guys have any questions?
What, what, uh, what grades go on this? And then how many kids are you anticipating roughly?
Um, it's nine through twelve. So I, I looked at the count today. I think we have around sixty-six students going.
Sixty-six?
Yeah, sixty-six, which is a good number. So I'm, I'm very excited about how much that went up from our past trip. Past trip was great. Um, and I think students found out how much fun it is to tour like that because it is a different experience than um, than going with, going with families. Just, it's just, you get to do so much in a little bit of time and you're with your peers. Um, so it's a, it's a great experience. Trip of the lifetime, I always think.
Alright, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, so I'm gonna invite David, our line back up, um, to give us a little bit more update. Um, kind of on the block schedule. I know we've had um, a number of um, conversations about that. And um, so David and his team has done uh, quite a bit of legwork on that. So David, you wanna give us an update as to what's happening in regards to the block schedule?
Absolutely. Uh, so it's been a process. And um, when we, when, so we have a group of teachers that represent different departments in the building. And um, when we met in the fall, we talked about some of the goals that we, that we had for our schedule. And um, I think you all have that.
Yep, I'm gonna put it back up. Yep.
Um, so core classes all year long, whether every day, every other day. Um, opportunity for remedial and advanced classes for our middle school students. Class length, we had a sweet spot of sixty-five to seventy minutes, uh, minute classes. And uh, staff, uh, trying to limit overloads and um, out of licensure, um, placements. As you know, like the block, the four-period block schedule requires a lot of staff. And so that, that's been a struggle with us the last few years. We moved to um, I was able to get sixth grade and part of seventh grade with, with the every uh, with core classes all year, every other day. And as a group, we didn't, we've changed things almost every year because of switching to the block and then COVID and just, you know, it's been, we've, we've bounced around a little bit. And so we wanted to find a balance this year of trying to meet our goals and not making wholesale changes again to our schedule because there are some really great things that we do have in there. Um, so next year, we're, we will have a five, five-period day. And our classes will go from their eighty minutes this year and they'll be seventy minutes next year. We able to uh, tighten up a few things within the schedule. Um, middle school electives, we are um, we, we went from where we were to all of a sudden offering a whole bunch of electives that we just weren't able to um, offer because of if there was lack of interest or if there were staffing issues. And so over the last few years, we've kind of pared that down. And we will continue to pare that down. And uh, one thing that we're looking at is having our middle school um, classes be on a, on a rotation. So there'll be, there'll be a set of four electives offered each quarter. And then they'll, they'll ro- rotate through that throughout the year. Going to a five-period day also enables us to uh, open up more opportunities for teachers to teach things that we had in the past. Um, we will be able to ha- have some remedial math classes for math and reading classes for our middle school students along with um, some electives that will, that will help to um, some of our advanced students. Um, as far as, as what we offer uh, at the high school level, um, we will continue to offer the online, this, this is the first year that we offered classes through Infinity Online. And that um, is just an opportunity for students to take classes that we, we don't offer in this building because of staffing or licensure. And within that Infinity Online, um, online school, some of the classes are for high school credit and some of the classes are, are considered college and the schools classes that students can take for credit. All of those classes are, uh, those students remain with us. If a student does a P S E O class over at Ridgewater or something like that, that student isn't with us. With the Infinity Online, we were able to offer a few of the classes. Um, an example would be medical terminology. That was a class that we had previously advertised through Central Lakes College, which would, which is a P S E O course. Now, um, Infinity Online offers that class within their system for college credits. So um, that is, that's in one example. And then there's, there's sports medicine classes, there's American Sign Language. Um, and, and a few other classes that we can, we can offer through that. We have gone through and looked at the enrollment for those classes, all of these classes and, and eliminated some that we didn't have any interest in for uh, this year or the last couple of years. Um, and then we continue to, we'll continue to offer the college and the schools uh, classes that are taught by uh, our staff. And we have uh, we're able to have some English classes, math classes, um, Ag and C T uh, classes, high school band, and then uh, science with uh, Project Lead the Way classes. Uh, personal finance is a class that uh, starting twenty-four, twenty-five, uh, those freshmen have to take a personal finance class before they graduate and they have to take that class in tenth grade, eleventh grade, or twelfth grade. So it technically wouldn't have to start until the year after next. But we are gonna offer that class next year to our sophomores and that will be a required class. And that class is uh, we can offer that through our math department or social studies department. And with our math department is um, we have a lot of college offerings and, and so those are longer classes. So we have a little less leeway with, with the math department. So we are gonna offer that through our social studies department, which um, which we already offer the, the economics class, which is a requirement for our students. So. Any questions or anything?
So then Dave, as far as the core classes, then going to go over to this for the uh, the middle school, I think it's probably focused more on the age tiers. But sorry, that could be around, this could be an A P schedule for them as far as those core classes or?
For the, for core classes. Now, we have to, for sure, it will be um, it will be math and science or math and.
Alright.
But uh, science and social studies may not be, those might be semester based, depending on what our staffing is at.
Alright, very good. Thank you.
When we were on a seven-period day, um, years ago, classes were uh, fifty-four minutes all year. And now they would be seventy minutes, so fifteen minutes a day about for um, adding to those classes.
Looked to me like it addresses a lot of the questions that we have had about it over the last five, six months or.
It's not perfect and it's, it's, when you, when you're dealing with licensure and um, you know, flexibility and staff and, and um, limited staff in some areas, it's it can be a little tricky. And, but we, we have a really good start on, on getting the core classes already scheduled in uh, for next year. And then, and then we will uh, play registration uh, soon with our, with our electives and, and see what we're, what our kids are interested in and, and what we offer.
And I think we did a good job. Certainly it's not perfect. We're moving in the right direction. Then we have enough, we can work with, we're always tweaking.
We wanna get something that is a little more stable and, and I think this will be, this will be good.
Okay.
Thank you for the update.
Thank you.
Alright, um, so next on our agenda is just a, a little bit of debrief for board members, um, just to kind of reflect on the survey. Um, I have a tap sat in here. Um, and, and I'll just kind of open it up for all of you to um, what takeaways did you have, uh, now that you've had an opportunity to look at it a little bit more? Uh, I think we had a little bit more discussion about kind of the the fact that we have to have some education around the tech levy. Um, but in regards to um, some of the other areas, I just, I will stop talking now and, and let you just give me some of your thoughts and takeaways after you've had a chance to dig into it.
I'm kind of where I was with the same question that I had before. I don't know there was a, let's say a solution for it, but um, to a degree, respondents in different age categories kind of went like this a little bit. Kind of depending upon um, the questions. I think it's just a good way for us to know what we need to address as we move forward. Because there's no question we have to have the levy come to the vote. I mean, I don't see any choices here. And we now have our ability to to get an idea of where people are at. It was fascinating to me in some cases where the people that were not um, in the school system had, in some cases, a better opinion of things going on than those in the system. That was absolutely fascinating. But um.
And if I remember right, and I don't remember, I guess if he said it at that meeting or if it was when he and I were just briefing about it, but sometimes when um, when we're ingrained in the system, we know more of the nuances and the minutia of the day-to-day that can be kind of, you get stuck in, right? And so um, it, it's, I, I thought it was an interesting observation as well. Yeah.
Well, and I think when I look at things, I've always thought it's very important for us as a school to represent us as a school of painsville, that people out and about that aren't necessarily related specifically have a pretty good opinion of us. Because that's what shows up when the kids come home and they're thinking about moving and wanting a school and all those discussions. And it looked to me like, okay, so we had some success in that.
Yep. I'm just going, going down to the comparison of um, how we're doing um, year over year. Any other observations or things that were aha moments for you digging in or that?
I don't think I had any more than to express any more aha moments than, you know, that could just be, you know, good analysis, good direction to understand, uh, you know, where we at or where we should be at on timing of when this needs to go to vote and, and the amount of communication and direction that communication has to go. I mean, looking at, you know, essentially how close we are to the halfway point of voters being able to approve this. You know, this is definitely scary, but it's also confirming that we, it's not like we're looking at the face of a heck no.
Yeah.
It's just, we need to educate that twenty-five percent of non-parents, non, you know, non-staff. You know, rather than communicate with them and, and get their ability to understand what the need is and what the desire and what it's really being used for. And, and that fact of, you know, you know, we're not necessarily asking for more, or is we're asking for that renewal.
Right.
Yeah, nothing uh, uh, nothing really changed for me as far as my thoughts, but uh, I do uh, I do agree that, I, I guess maybe if, as far as trying to uh, trying to come up with a plan of, of moving forward, I think we need to focus on first getting the tech levy passed. But uh, I don't know with uh, Janelle, your staff, uh, with the two uh, principles that we have and, and then working through that, I think we can address some other issues because of the questions that were asked.
Yep.
But I think from the board side, we need to focus on getting levy passed. And uh, with the understanding that I think we're very comfortable hands with the way that the school is run with uh, your staff, that the other issues will be addressed and we'll start seeing results of that, or at least your guys' plans. So I appreciate that.
Nothing surprised me. I'm, I'm just, I'm anxious. I think we just, we wanna set a date for a vote and start moving backwards to figure out what we need to do in the meantime so that we make sure we do everything possible to get this community educated.
Um, on that note, I'll just add, um, and I was just pulling up the dates here. So um, the August date um, for an election is August thirteenth. And there is actually a primary that day, so we would not have to run it on our own. Um, it would be done with um, with the city. Um, and then in order to do that, the board would need to issue a resolution by May thirty-first. So um, that would be the kind of the timeline. If we were gonna look at May, a- again, that timeline was March first. So, and we all, I've heard everybody agree that that wasn't feasible. So um, and then if, if for some reason there would be something really wonky and we kind of collectively have a conversation and you all decide, you know what, we're going out in November, we have to decide by August twenty-third. But.
I'm not throwing an opinion of November. I think the tech levy is something we need our people of this community to analyze.
Yeah.
Because it has a lot of strings on how we're educating the students and the need.
Yeah.
I would be really concerned that in the, the November election that people's minds are gonna be on other things other than us.
Oh wait, I thought you said you were looking at November.
Oh, no.
That's what I thought you said too. I'm like, I don't, I don't.
Cause I, I think the same thing. You know, November is gonna be so overwhelmed with other stuff going on.
I was, yeah.
Nobody's gonna listen to us.
And when you start, I have the same. When you finish, I got where you're at.
We're going in August, right? And I think.
That's what I.
That's what I prefer to.
And it, and it's still ample time to build our communication and communicate across the summer. Um, you know, to, to be prepared for that vote.
Right.
Well, a deadline would be.
So May thirty-first. Yep, so.
That's, that's ample time, isn't it?
Plenty of time. Yep, we have a good time. Yep. So um, with that, um, you know, I, I mentioned that um, um, I've, Chris and I have had some communication with um, with Jacob about some publications, uh, reaching out to staff. I know the principals have had a conversation with staff about, you know, how, what's the best way to get communication out. I know staff have asked, how can we support and get information? So I know that we're gonna have a lot of, of, of people communicating. And so we just have to kind of work on, bless you. Um, work on messaging, um, making sure that, that it's just really clear how integrated all of this has become. Our, our learning is no longer just, I, I can't just take away a Chromebook and say, here, we're gonna go back to a book. I mean, there's just so much learning that's just integrated across the board. So um, so that'll be coming in the next weeks and then uh, we'll, we'll be working on that communication. Um, we'll also um, have some targeted campaign for the press as well. Cause I know that is such a big, a big um, platform for our non-parents, non-educate, non-teacher or non-staff um, to help reach the rest of the general public.
Was some of the survey stuff gonna go into the press? I guess I thought originally.
Yes.
We can't talk about that. Cause I guess I, on the negative side, you know, I was, I was really, barely disappointed about the seventeen percent response rate, but like that guy said, that's pretty normal. But being we're sitting at that fifty-one, fifty-two percent and, you know, if we can sway that other twenty-five, thirty percent, I mean, hope to get this through. But you know, we've got a lot of work ahead as far as to educate and kind of explain what this tech levy is. So.
Yeah. And I think when, when we've started talking administratively and, and we had um, we're, just a couple of days after this was presented, we had an uh, administrative meeting and kind of reviewed this again. And, and I think it really is that takeaway of how integrated everything has become, that um, sometimes it, it is really about telling the nuanced stories of how this is how our kids learn. This is how our students are accessing their education. And it's not just a, a one thing that you can turn on and turn off or it's, it's, it's how it all comes together. So we're thinking of how to tell that story in the most effective way and also not trying to do that in an overwhelming and confusing type of way either. So, yep. Alright, um, so if there aren't any further questions or observations, we'll circle. all right. So if there aren't any further questions or observations, we'll circle back to this. Like you said, Gerald, our admin team will do some work with the, the surveys of the the future ready graduates, the skills that our graduates need to have. There's some good information in here for our, our teachers and our teams to dig into. So that'll be coming over the course of time. But in the meantime, we'll continue to to move forward with the target of August thirteenth for, for a vote. So Rick, is there anything that you want to entertain for roundtable?
Roundtable. I just want to ask, you want to give a just update to the board and community about the high school principal position?
Absolutely. Yes. So the high school principal position has been posted. It closes on Friday. Interviews are scheduled for March twenty first. The amount of time will kind of depend on the final number of candidates that we have. I have, there are some parents and community members who are gonna be part of the committee. Staff, we're again trying to limit the number of subs that are required for that day. The administrative cabinet will be there. Really looking to make a decision early, real quickly here at the end of March so that we can turn around and kind of do some onboarding and transitioning as we, as we send David on his way. But so the position has been posted and we do have applicants coming in. So we're excited about that.
Are there any other requests for information or comments before we draw this to a close? Then the meeting's over.
Okay.
Most of the adjournments, we don't
Six fifty one?
But we will be adjourning.
We'll re-adjourn after the full session in just a minute. Yep. Okay.